It's now telling me recordings in progress. All right, the meeting will begin. I see no public here for public speak. Does the mayor have any communication other than what's on the agenda?
No, I do not.
Okay, and we have no minutes from prior meetings to approve yet. So I'm gonna go right into the first item on the agenda, which is, I'm gonna try and find it. A Free Cash, a report from Personnel. So Emily, we need this for workman's comp, nineteen thousand seven hundred one dollars, correct?
Yes.
And this is just to cover a shortfall in that area, right?
Yeah, we didn't realize we owed a fourth quarter that, I think last year may not have been accounted for as well, and this year kind of wasn't factored in. Not gonna lie, I think next year it might be a thing too because of that. Because we realized it after we had submitted the budget. So just kind of put that in the back of your head. But just that fourth quarter payment to Trident Insurance. To cover.
And it's coming out of Free Cash. Any, I have no, we always get these things at the end of the year. Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead Peg.
I'm curious, what? So I see that in July, it looks like there were two payments that were paid. Sixty-nine thousand, is that what that was in July?
Probably one of them was, because we have the workers' comp through Trident, and then we have the 111F workers' comp.
Okay.
So it's possible. Let me see, I don't think what the amount was.
Because it looks like it's double thirty-four eighty, not forty. It looks like it's twice that. Just curious.
Yeah, I can look back on that for you.
All right, I'm just curious. So that would, I mean, it would, it would then make one, two, three, four, five payments. Is this thing that we have, is this an annual bill? I'm just trying to understand.
Yes.
So the installment schedule shows a double payment in Jul-, well, I don't really know when the date, last July.
Yeah, we've done like a partial payment.
An October payment, a January of this year payment, and an April payment, so that in July of 2021, will you pay two payments again for the ensuing year? How's that gonna work?
I honestly am not quite sure yet. I know we had made our payments, and then we made a partial payment, and then this was kind of the remainder off of that partial payment. So maybe that's why it's showing up as the five payments.
It's just confusing, because it looks like it's five payments of thirty-four eight eighty-four. And if that's fine, and one of the quarters is a double payment, then that explains why there's a, you know. If the grand total is right, and you're good with the premium being a hundred and seventy-four thousand four oh whatever. I guess it doesn't matter how you guys pay it off.
Yeah.
So this pays it off to the end of the year, because we're just short of the premium payment.
Yeah.
Okay. Omar, do you have any questions? He's shaking his head. Anything from anybody else? Mayor, Jen, anybody? All right. Then I'll take a motion to recommend to the city council approve nineteen seven oh one from Free Cash for workers' comp account.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve nineteen thousand seven oh one. We have further discussion. Hearing none, Council Gomez.
Aye.
Councilor Coniff.
Aye.
And Council Riss says aye. The next item is DPW snow removal. This is typical. We catch up at the end of the year. Let me find it on my. It's coming from Free Cash, ninety-four thousand four hundred dollars. I have no questions. This is just typical. So does anybody have any questions?
We don't have, is the DPW here? I was just curious as to what the grand total was for this winter.
Jen, could you answer that? The entire snow removal?
Were you asking Jen?
Jen, yes, the treasurer.
I don't, I can look it up. I don't have it off the top of my head.
It's not critical. It was more curiosity than anything.
Well, we normally budget, what, one fifty? So I'm gonna guess it's one fifty plus ninety-four four hundred. This is a guess.
That seems reasonable.
Seems logical.
Yes, I agree. Okay.
All right, Omar, you have any questions?
Nope.
Then I'll take a motion to approve ninety-four thousand four hundred dollars for DPW snow removal shortfall account.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the DPW snow removal shortfall for ninety-four thousand four hundred. Any further discussion? Council Gomez.
Aye.
Council Coniff.
Aye.
Council Riss says aye. The next item is the Fire Department Chief. The chief is here. Chief, tell us why we need this money.
Hi, good afternoon everyone.
Give it to you.
Yeah, good afternoon everyone. As, as we started this fiscal year, the deputy fire chief position was not funded. And at the start of this year, the deputy chief was in that position from July first through December twenty-sixth. And during that timeframe, we paid out to that position a total of forty-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars. So what we did with the mayor and her financial team was strategically wait until this time to see if we could find any additional savings in the fire department budget. So we were able to, that was based on the inability to hire in a timely manner based on civil service. So instead of requesting the full forty-nine thousand four ninety-two, we're looking for thirty thousand dollars to pay for that position from July first through December twenty-sixth. The other component you'll see there is the thirty-three thousand dollars for vehicle repair and maintenance. With the vehicle repair and maintenance, back in early April, our ladder truck, it's a two thousand and eight. Based on national standards, those vehicles have a expected, a life expectancy of twenty-five years. So we've met half that life expectancy. And it broke down early April with some wear pads that when the ladder extends out, it doesn't rub against the metal. Those wear pads needed to be replaced. And while it was out there, I had them do an assessment on the hydraulic system that had been leaking for, what I've been told, was the past three years. When they did that assessment, which was done out in Albany, they came back and advised me that the hydraulic system, there's a swivel in there that runs the main control panel for that ladder extending in and out and able to rotate. That needed to be replaced completely at a cost of an additional twenty-five thousand dollars. I spoke with Dennis Ruthier from Motor Repair, who does all the service for the vehicles. And with his input and talking with the mayor, based on the life expectancy, we've had it for thirteen years. We had to get that replaced, otherwise that ladder would not be able to put back in service. So the total cost of that was thirty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, I have a question on deputy chief position. That's not currently filled, right?
So that was vacated December twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. So that, that currently is empty.
So you get this appropriation, you're able to hire?
No, that, that money that I'm requesting right now is for the first half of this fiscal year we're in, that we expended forty-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars. The thirty thousand is basically making up for a part of that difference that was never funded in the first place.
Okay, but my question is, does it fund the deputy chief position to be hired? I'm, I'm totally lost here. Peg is, maybe you could explain this to me, Peg. You're muted Peg.
There was a deputy chief getting paid last fall, from whatever to December twenty-sixth. They got a paycheck. That was an unbudgeted paycheck that they got. So now Chris was able to cut other areas and was able to save nineteen thousand dollars in the budget. But that still leaves thirty that he has to appropriate to fill the gap.
I think I understand. I should have understood. Maybe too much sun today. Thank you, Chris. Totally, you're, you're covering a budget gap that occurred when the, when the chief position was vacated.
Correct.
Good. Omar, any questions?
Nope, to me, everything makes sense.
And the maintenance makes sense to me. Peg, anything?
No, I just appreciate, Chris, the thorough nature of your explanations. I really appreciate it. It kind of leaves us with going, well, okay, that makes sense. So I appreciate the thoroughness of how you present to us.
No, certainly, thank you.
Mayor, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, Jen, you're all set. I, I would request a motion for sixty-three thousand dollars. It's coming from Cannabis Stabilization for full-time, fire full-time supervisory account, thirty thousand, and vehicle repair and maintenance, thirty-three thousand.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve sixty-three thousand dollars from Cannabis Stabilization to, for two fire department accounts. Any further discussion? Council Gomez.
Aye.
Council Coniff.
Aye.
And Council Riss says aye. So Chris, you're done. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
I am now, we're gonna go into the budget motions. But before we do that, two things. In conversations with Jen, we discovered, as we all remembered when we were doing the library closure and recreation, the formula for, for that particular appropriation was seemingly incorrect. It was resolved, but it caused the budget to need to be higher. Instead of doing a supplemental later on, as I understand it, the mayor wanted to increase that line right now so the state doesn't have a fit because we underfunded the library. Is that fair, Nicole?
So it's, it's not as much that the state will have a fit, but if we don't fund the library to the extent by the state calculation, then the library is not eligible for other state funds.
There you go.
So that, that's the important distinction there.
And Jen, you've discovered the formula was incorrect for the paperwork, and you're correcting that for future formulas.
Yes, it actually was just picking up the wrong, the wrong cell, because you're supposed to take the prior three years. It skipped a year.
Okay.
So.
Do I ask the mayor to provide us with a request to amend the budget? Because as you all know, we cannot increase the budget as a council. Only the mayor can make that request. So this, unlike the other requests, which actually reduced the budget, we can approve those, no problem, because we are allowed to do that. But we're not allowed to raise a budget line unless the mayor asks us. So that's where the letter came from, to make it all legal. I don't remember doing this very often, in fact, rarely, because we've been able to cover minor changes through supplementals or transfers. But this is important. So we got that letter. When we get to that account, that, that number will read on these motions, which I'll show, will be the one council approved or amended. What I'll do tonight, when I, I'll read the motions, but I will not read, we will say something to the nature that enterprise chargebacks will be provided. Because Hedo is saying they will be provided before the June second meeting. And we're approving the bottom line anyway. But also in approving them at the council level, we must approve what Enterprise is paying for in each one of those lines where they are paying for. Does that make sense to you, Omar? We're gonna not only approve the bottom line tonight. Because those chargebacks don't change the bottom line. Before we do all that, I wanted to give, I'm gonna share the screen for the budget for East Hampton Zoom. It's empty. Where is it? I'm gonna find you.
She's now Emily. Yes.
But I have to find. Wrong. I wanna go to. Okay, here's your budget. Now Emily, what we did with the other department heads, we went over this, is we asked them to give us a little bullet point of your narrative, what you see coming for human resources, trends, et cetera, and your goals and accomplishments, et cetera, that you did in the narrative. If you want to give us a bullet point on that, mainly for the reporting, reporting in the public.
Yeah, absolutely. So this year, first of all, I'm new to the position, so this is a little bit of an adventure for me. But this year, our goal is, I have myself and an assistant who works about twenty-four hours per week. We also have benefits coordinator, who comes in one day a week and also works remotely to help us with all our enrollments for that and managing all our health, dental, all those kind of benefits for our employees. This year, our primary goal, I think, is we really want to streamline our processes, kind of create solid procedures and processes for the personnel department, because there has been so much turnover. I think we kind of need to get that out there and make the policies very clear, make our employees very aware. We also really want to build employee engagement. I really want to focus on the well-being of our employees in the city. So trying to find new ways to do that, to make employees feel engaged in East Hampton and make them feel like they're getting the most out of their employment here. So working on that. Trend-wise, we have, actually, health insurance was an amazing thing this year. We actually had a two percent decrease, which really helped us with our budget in a lot of areas. We had two percent decrease for Medicare, or Medex, and for our thirty-two B health insurance, the HMO plan. So that was really good. Otherwise, things have been staying, I'd say, pretty stable across the board. Hiring is, has been a struggle, but I see, hopefully, that'll be changing soon. And we'll be kind of getting new, fresh employees to build on. So I don't know what more you would want to know about specifically for our budget.
Oh, that's fine. We just want the people watching to understand what Human Resources does.
Yeah.
And what you see moving forward. Here's the numbers. My only question was, we have, you have one assistant, right?
Yes.
So I didn't understand this here.
Uh.
It's down to twenty-five nine fifty. Is that because?
I don't know.
That entry level, Jen, or mayor? I don't know. Who's?
I think that might be an error. Well, she's a personnel assistant, but she works twenty-four hours a week, and she's point six. So, and then, yeah, we requested the twenty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty. So it shouldn't be thirty-four hours a week. It should be the twenty-four, and it should be the FTE point six.
So should this figure, sorry, should that twenty-five nine fifty be down here? Jen?
Well, is she, see, I looked at the person, or I looked in the payroll, and she's listed as a personnel assistant, so I wasn't quite sure if I should.
No, she's a personnel assistant. We have her at less hours than previously, just because we do have our benefits coordinator now. So we, at this moment, didn't think it was necessary to have a full-time clerical and have a benefits coordinator.
Okay, and even though, correct me if I'm wrong, but the benefits coordinator is not paid out of the general fund?
No, she is paid out of professional services.
Okay.
So if that's your budget, but is that your budget, professional services, right here?
Um, there should be a line item for six thousand for professional services.
Right here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's just sort of contracted?
Yeah, she's contracted.
I'll take out the point six for the clerk. Right now, you don't have a clerk, and I will put the point six for personnel assistant, because that's what Kira is.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Peg, go for it Peg.
So the forty-two six sixty-six from last year for point eighty-five of an FTE, is that the same human being that's doing it today?
No, that was me.
I was gonna say, I think.
Okay, so, because I was gonna say, that salary would not translate to twenty-five nine fifty if that became a point six employee. So now I get it. Thank you very much, and we'll all move on.
Okay, Omar, do you have any questions?
No, my question, my question was that, and they already answered. Thank you.
All right, this looks good. The benefits coordinator, I'm just curious. They come in like once a week and checks all the benefits and all the accounting and everything. What do they do?
Yeah, so she works for, like, with COVID, it's been a little bit more difficult. But she works remotely. She'll check, because we have a lot of people who age out or need to transfer to Medicare, stuff like that. So she screens all of that. We'll contact them, set them up with what they need to do for changes. Also for new employees or terminated employees, when they're either enrolling or disenrolling in benefits. She handles all that. So she's been coming in one day a week, and she'll, once we're open again, we'll do in-person appointments, but has been doing most of them virtually now.
Seems inexpensive for the amount of work you just listed, but okay.
That's why we love.
Any other questions? Any other comments from anybody?
I do have one, and it's about, where is it? I'm sorry, professional services. That was a one thousand last year, and jumped to six thousand. What is, what is?
That, that's because we pay our benefit coordinator through professional services instead of treating her as an employee, because we, she's contracted.
So in other words, if I can understand that, for Omar's sake too, you used to be, when you were assistant, you did all that work.
Yes.
So that's why this is reduced to twenty-five nine fifty for the new person. And we add that six thousand, so it's less money. But that's because the new person isn't doing any benefits coordinating. Does that clear it up to you, Omar?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna stop this here and put up the motions. We got revised motions today. And Jen, pay attention to these numbers. Make sure I say the right number. Interrupt me if I'm wrong. What I'm gonna do, counselors, is read the motion, and one of you is gonna say so moved, and then we'll have discussion, okay? So what I'm gonna do is use this figure, Jen?
Yes.
Here. Correct?
Yes.
This is where the budget was presented, and since it's reduced, we're amending it down.
Yes.
And this is the reason. And I like that. If we, we're gonna send these to the full council, that's good. So Section One General Government, I move that the Finance Committee recommend to the full council that city to raise and appropriate the sum of one million nine hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and seventy, five hundred and seven dollars and fifty-nine cents for the various departments listed under one Section, Section One General Government with enterprise chargebacks to be provided by June second.
So move.
Second.
Further discussion.
You, the motion that's on the screen is not what you read.
I did that on purpose, because we don't have these numbers in yellow.
Okay.
I didn't want to read these.
Just wondering.
And also, I want, I'm just using this to give me the, you know, the section and that. I have to read this exactly at the finance, at the full council, but we have to have all these numbers too.
Yep, okay.
All right, any further discussion? The motion on the floor is to approve the budget for the general government. Council Con, the Council Coniff.
Aye.
Council Gomez.
Aye.
And Council Riss says aye. Public safety, there are no changes. So I'll make a motion to approve, I mean, to recommend that the city council vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five million six hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents for the various departments listed under Section Two Public Safety, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations as recommended by the mayor in this finance subcommittee.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Council Gomez.
Aye.
Council Coniff.
Aye.
Council Riss says aye. We have no enterprise chargebacks for schools, so I'll read the motion as it is. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seventeen million ninety-seven thousand and six hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-three cents for the various departments listed under Section Three Schools. And the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriation as recommended by the mayor and this finance subcommittee.
So move.
Second, sir.
Any further discussion?
I do have a comment. I wasn't at the meeting for the school department, because I called the ethics commission, and I want to put this clear, that I called the ethics commission, and the recommendation from then was not be part of that discussion. But at the end, they, they said that I'm allowed to vote for the, for the last motion. So that's what I, I, I made the motion, and that's what I'm gonna vote now. But I do my diligent calling the ethics commission about this, because to let everybody know, my wife worked at the school department.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Omar.
Good to hear. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Council Gomez.
Aye.
Council Coniff.
Aye.
Council Riss says aye. Thank you. We did originally, in one of the motions that was sent to us, have a change in Public Works, but then it was corrected by Jen. Hey Jen?
Yeah.
Just a minor. The word subcommittee is gonna drive Barbara crazy. We're not committees.
Okay. I will change that.
Just so you know.
Gotcha.
So I move that the city, that the Finance Committee recommend to the full city council to vote and raise the appropriate and appropriate the sum of one million eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-two cents for the various departments listed under Section Four Public Works, and the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with enterprise chargebacks to be provided at a later date.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the budget for Public Works. Any further discussion?
Just a stupid question, because I have to ask it. Remind me, Dan, why, one of the numbers that I have was one point eight six six million, and now we're at one point eight six nine million. What was the difference there? And maybe what I'm looking at was not aligned with the book that we got.
You did say, Jen. Go ahead and answer it, Jen.
Okay, yeah, and that's exactly what it is, Peg. The, this figure that you're looking at on the screen right now is the figure that was included in the mayor's legal advertisement of the, the section totals. And this is the figure that was in the larger budget book, but not this spreadsheet.
The detail was different. Thank you. Okay, got it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. We did that, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Gomez, do you have any questions or discussion? Discussion? So Council Gomez.
Aye.
Council Coniff.
Aye.
Council Riss says aye. Human Services, there are no enterprise chargebacks. I'll read it as written. I move that the Finance Committee recommend to the full city council to vote and raise and appropriate the sum of six hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and six cents for the various departments listed under Section Five Human Services. And the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations as recommended by the mayor in the Finance Subcommittee.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Council Gomez.
Aye.
And Council Coniff.
Aye.
Council Riss says aye. This is the appropriation that's increasing. The mayor has requested it, and by voting to approve this amended six hundred and nine thousand dollar vote, we are approving the mayor's request to increase this line item in the printed budget. we are approving the mayor's request to increase this line item in the printed budget. So if we have no questions, I'm gonna read this. I move that the city, the Finance Committee recommend to the city council to vote and raise and appropriate the sum of six hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents for the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, as amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amount to be transferred as recommended by the mayor and Finance Subcommittee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so Jen, just an aside, I think that should be as amended, given that we amended it.
Okay.
All right, so when we do the, maybe do a little amendment of the motion. Any further discussion? Okay, Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Counselor Riss says aye. Debt and interest, we do have enterprise chargebacks here, so I will make that particular motion. I move that the Finance Committee recommend to the city council to vote and raise the appropriate the sum of five million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventeen cents for the various departments listed under Section Seven, Debt and Interest, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the amounts for enterprise chargebacks to be provided by June second to the full council.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing non, Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Counselor Riss says aye. Unclassified, Employee Benefits. This was decreased. Can you explain this decrease again, just for the public, Jen, what this means?
Yep, so the PIR Act, which is the retirement, this retire, I can't remember what it stands for, but it's the Retirement Association. They, based on an assessment that's done, they determine what the city needs to appropriate to the East Hampton Contributory Retirement Board each year. And it starts off in, like, December, they send us a letter with just a bulk amount. The original bulk amount that they sent us was three million, five thirty-seven, four fifty, which was the amount that was in the original budget. But we end up getting a breakdown of that, and there is a portion of it that East Hampton Housing Authority actually pays in. So the city is only responsible for the difference. And in this case, the East Hampton Housing Authority portion is like ninety thousand, nine hundred, and our portion is three million, four forty-six, five thirty-eight. So that's why this decreased.
Well, we always like that we say a bond. So again, anywhere where the numbers have changed, the word as amended should be in the motion. And just so I don't forget, these new motions, when you put them in, you're just gonna give us motions with this figure right over here.
Yep.
And the new enterprise figures here. So when you get those from Hedo, maybe Monday or Tuesday, we'll publish them. I'll tell Barbara that we're waiting on those. Should we, well, we'll talk about that later. Let me make the motion. I move that the Finance Committee recommend to the full city council to vote to raise and appropriate the sum of nine million, four hundred and thirty-five dollars, three hundred and seventy dollars and eighteen cents for the various departments listed under Section Eight, Employee Benefits, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, as amended, be considered specific appropriations with enterprise chargebacks to be provided to the full council by June second.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to further the discussion. Seeing non, Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Con?
Aye.
Counselor Riss says aye. Community Preservation, I move that the city, that the Finance Committee recommend to the full city council to vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the various departments listed under Section Nine, Community Preservation, and the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the total amount to be raised and appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund as recommended by the mayor and Finance Subcommittee.
So moved. Second.
Pick one.
Whatever, whatever.
Barbara writes the minutes should pick one. Any further discussion? Hearing non, Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Counselor Riss says aye. Finally, Enterprise. Oh. Well, that makes sense. This is the, this is the same as that, because it's Enterprise, which, we can't charge Enterprise the same thing. Anyway, I move that the Finance Committee recommend to the full city council to vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and eighteen cents for the various departments listed under Section Ten, Enterprise, and the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred as recommended by the mayor and Finance Subcommittee, Water and Sewer Enterprise, two million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy and eighteen cents.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing non, Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Counselor Riss says aye. So a couple of business things. Peg, do you think Barbara wants these motions? And she wants to put them in the package? I think they might be confusing to the counselors. Because if I give them all this, I like, they're not gonna want, they're gonna want to know what this means and everything.
I can update them, and I did say.
You won't have the enterprise numbers.
Yeah, we'll just amend it, Dan, on Monday or Tuesday, whenever we get it.
I'll just tell Barbara, we're gonna have to send it on Tuesday when we get all the numbers.
And I don't, yeah, I don't want, this would be very confusing, just to hit a deadline that really it doesn't matter, so.
Okay, that's why I asked. I agree.
Yep.
Are you okay with that, Omar? I don't think, I'm gonna tell Barbara that we decided not to give you the motions until Monday, and you'll, we'll just have to publish them on Monday. So Jen, you're gonna write as amended, anything that's changed? And Hedo's gonna provide us with these figures for chargebacks? And I will provide the full city council, the mayor's letter asking for an increase. Okay? Do we have anything else to discuss tonight? I'm gonna stop this here, if somebody has something. Okay, well, thank you. I hope you all have a great evening.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
It says aye.
Counselor Riss?
Aye.
Counselor Riss says aye.